All right, we're going to call to order the October 2nd meeting of the Green County Board of Supervisors. Terry, you're the biggest in the class.
...
Okay, Ms. Morris is going to be a little late today. So with that, we'll move on to public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes unless they change matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record. And address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to subject matters to the appropriate department for a follow-up or schedule a matter on a subsequent board meeting.
Edward Harvey Weaverville. Basically, I want to talk about the relationship between the board supervisors and the grand jury. I come away with this feeling that a lot of people think it's an adversarial relationship. It really is an allied relationship. The grand jury helps you guys run a better government. You could help the grand jury by helping them decide what to look at and things that you're interested in as well. This last grand jury only gave one report. Only had two findings, which the board supervisor is totally rejected. But then they come back and sort of deal with the recommendations of dealing with those findings. One of which was training. There is an organization for board of supervisors people, an association, which offers training courses. Three separate sessions of a couple of days each. I imagine many of you probably have taken that. The grand jury has a grand jury association which runs courses. When you first become a grand juror, you go to a two-day course. And then there's some follow-up courses, like if you're the foreman of the jury, you get extra courses. There's a course on report writing and several other courses. Training is very useful. And both groups of you have organizations to help you with that training. Anyway, what I want to emphasize is you guys are really allies. You're not adversaries. And you're working together to make things better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Graves from Lewiston. I'm just going to kind of follow up a little bit on what Everett said. The grand jury is not supposed to be your enemy. They're supposed to be working with you, and they try to. And the same with the people. And I know I lecture you on election stuff all the time, but here we go again. California has the most open elections, probably in the state. You can't do legally what we can do here as observers in other states. I found that stunning when I was doing my research. The sad thing is, it's all on paper, and it's all on code, and it's supposedly law, and it doesn't happen. And I know we argue over, you know, what the wording says, because to me, it's clear. The election code is written like a how-to recipe. If you start in the beginning, it tells you every little step of the way in the code. And even the board of supervisors, in your own code, has the ability to observe and oversee our elections. And you guys just won't do it. And we're not adversaries. You would think everybody wants our elections run fair and legally. But somewhere along the way, it doesn't happen. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, with that, we'll close the public comment period. And I apologize, we have a member to introduce herself to the public.
My name is Amanda Irvin. I'm in the department with Justice Long.
Thank you. All right, on to board supervisors. On to the consent calendar, excuse me. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that and will be acted upon by the board by one or real call motion. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item be pulled and considered separately. All right, Terry, do you have anything today?
Item 1.12.
John?
Yes, sir.
Bobby?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have nothing today. Any staff? In the public? All right, without I entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Supervisor Chabrick?
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley?
Yes.
Supervisor Martin?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Burris?
Aye. All right, item 1.12. Terry, you had a question?
Yeah. I know that you were...
Oh, excuse me, I have to read it, thank you. Approve the modification to the agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Forest Service, Shasta Trinity National Forest, modifying and consider D, Cooperative Law Enforcement, Annual Operating Plan, and Financial Plan, increasing funding by $30,000 to support operations that suppress manufacturing and production of controlled substances on or affecting the administration of the national forest systems lands. Additional $30,000 revenue for the sheriff's department. Now, Terry.
Okay, sorry. Controlled substances. I just want to make sure this doesn't include cannabis, because right now, these people aren't cooperating with state laws. And so before we start handing Forest Service more money for enforcement in Trinity County, I want to make sure that they're not doing this against the cannabis, the illegal cannabis people. They're doing this because I understand recently, you know, distributor of all state licenses, not just county, the state licenses have a problem again, and are counting with federal offices. So I'm not sure how this works, but it's a very generalized statement saying controlled substances.
So I'll let you describe what this money's for.
This money is money that we receive from the United States Forest Service for any illegal activity on national forest land.
Which would include cannabis, correct?
Yes, if it's on national forest property, yes.
Okay, no problem. I just wasn't sure exactly how it would be written out.
All right, public questions?
Does that include...
Go ahead. Well, let her go first, then.
Since it was polled, I was wondering if the, because the contract has people in it and the contact people, like Mr. Rist, who's no longer the under sheriff, maybe it could just be updated before? You might want to make suggestions of updating the personnel before it goes out.
David Greer, Federal City. When you say national forest lands, does that include highways within national territory?
Go ahead, Nancy.
Generally, our officers don't do things on the highway. It's just national forest land. I can't speak to what the Forest Service law enforcement officers do. This money would not be towards them, it would just be for our office.
Okay, so CAO, you said that you would update the personnel on the...
Yeah, I work with the sheriff's department to update personnel on that. What was that in order?
All right. Any other comments? With that, we'll bring it back to the board.
Item 1.12 as written.
Okay, second.
I'll second. I have amendments.
With the update of the personnel. All right. With that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same as I. All right. All right, on to reports and announcements. Any reports from department heads today?
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board. Angie Bickle, Arbiter Controller. I'm pleased to announce that for the fourth consecutive year, Trinity County has received the GFOA award, which is the highest award in governmental accounting and financial reporting for any county, city, school, special district, or the state of California itself. It's an extreme amount of hard work for my staff and for the departments. And I would like to publicly thank my staff, Pam Coffee, Diana Patoni, Christine Beckley, and Chelsea Jones, Mike Martin's not present today. And we'd also like to thank the board for their continued support. Craig Goodman, our consultant, which without him, we couldn't accomplish this. I took a look to see what county that's closest to our size has submitted this award or received an award. And 12 of me is the closest. They have 14 staff members within their department, where we have six. So I think it says a lot for Trinity County, and I'm very proud that we've received it again.
We are too.
Congratulations, and congratulations, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any department heads want to follow that up?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. All right, on to CAO.
Nothing to report this time. Do you have some questions regarding the K-9 officer?
I did, thank you. There was some confusion out there that I know unfortunately, we lost a K-9 officer. It just doesn't come across. Sorry, guys. Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate it.
Thanks for IT's help.
Yes. With all these hands, thank you. Unfortunately, we lost a K-9, and one may be on sick leave, may be returning back to work.
Euphemism, I think Hefford is good.
So it didn't, wasn't a request at the time our budget was presented, but I know you've heard immediately after there was, they reached out because it was just happening. So can you give us an update on what we're able to do to help? Because I know there's some questions out in the public.
Yes, you're correct, there wasn't a request in the 1819 budget, because it had not happened yet. But since they have reached out to the administration and asked if there was a way that the county could assist in purchasing another dog. Currently, we have two K-9s on duty, and I'm working with, I'm the sheriff, competent right now to secure a third dog. He believes, and I agree, that K-9s just are crucial to our law enforcement. They help keep the public safe and officers safe. So we're working with the community and through some other funding to assist in securing a third dog, which won't affect the sheriff's budget, it'll be outside of the sheriff's budget. So the county is in complete support. And I'll bring this back to the board later for approval if we're able to secure the dog.
And on the dog that we lost, do you think that will be covered?
Yes, that will be covered. That again, won't affect the sheriff's budget, we'll cover that under our assurance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for you?
Thank you.
All right, on to reports from supervisors. Bobby?
We have the RCRC, I'm sure Supervisor Finley will go into more detail than that. It was in Napa, three days, September 19th through the 21st. And it was amazing. I was really grateful to be able to be there on behalf of Trinity County. The first morning led off with the mother of a kindergartner who had survived Sandy Hook shooting. And there was a great emphasis on schools being prepared. And she went over the timeline, which was really impressive. But the caliber of people that come and speak out these events are just wonderful. And I know that CSAC and RCRC both are now putting those things up online. And they have very specific things, so if you're interested in listening to like the USDA talk on what the grants possibilities are, or if you're, you know, tree mortality, or you might want to look those up, because it's pretty, for me to try to report out, there's just no way to do it justice. We did go to a winery one day for, what do they call it? Networking, I believe they call it. And I just have never been on a winery that incredibly big, 200 acres, and just breathtaking. So thank you, thank you for the opportunity. Let me go now.
No, I didn't count.
Terry? John?
RCRC. As Supervisor Chabrick said, Sandy Hook presentation was very moving. Moved me outside the room a couple times, then I came back in and dealt with it and listened to it. Another presentation regarding the current state of, I guess, our political situation. It was very interesting. I'd like to give the supervisors links to the book that the speaker had. It's just very interesting. The other presentations were all excellent and had a very, very enlightening. Also, during our meeting, I mentioned to CAO that USDA supervisor, or not supervisor anymore, should whack me, Director Kim Vandobo is looking at possibly adding some funding that we can access for our jail, which would be great. And there's a lot of money out there with USDA. I know I mentioned it earlier in the year regarding contacting Director Vandobo for our communications, but there's a lot of money out there. Some people might not like where it's coming from, but I still think we should access it.
I'm going to interrupt. He's being very polite, because John puts together, Supervisor Finley puts together a basket. Every year at RCRC, they do an auction. And the auction money goes to different things. This year, it was split. It was the Special Olympics for Northern California and John, what was his name?
Yeah.
And, but he goes around throughout the county, and he puts together all kinds of unique things from our county. And they're auctioned off, and I believe our basket went first.
Yes.
For the most money.
They wanted it the best.
Good job.
Thank you. That's it, I'm done.
Okay, and I had no out-of-county travel. Ad-hoc's? Stake cannabis legislation?
I'm still trying to confirm that the temporary license issue with the state, that legislation was actually signed by the governor. Of course, he signed a bunch of bills by Sunday night, as many of you have seen in the news. Also, there was some legislation on medical cannabis issue and privacy along with that. So I will shoot all of you a note once I know it's signed.
Okay.
Tell us, John, no?
No.
The...
You get emails all the time.
From her or from the state?
No, from the state, it's just...
All right, I'm sorry.
And he said, there's a lot of stuff on his desk right now.
All right, permanent cannabis ordinance commercial.
Let's see. The amendments for manufacturing went to the planning commission. We will be bringing them back to the board soon. As you've heard us talk about, some members to cultivation, we'll be going to the planning commission in theory on the 11th. And then, of course, it will ultimately come back to the board. Then we will start working on retail.
You did not? All right, new jail, CAO, you want to...
There's nothing new to report, Mr. Rivers, I'm ready.
Okay. COP refinancing?
I think it's all complete, and if I got an email to correct, we made our first name already.
That's correct.
Okay, so we can go ahead and remove this from the report?
Correct.
Budget development? We can also remove that from that. And we'll order this oversight. We have not set down some dates or some time to go out and talk to more people about this. So that, and John should do that soon.
Yes, sir. Possibly involve John Driscoll and that officer.
We can discuss that.
Okay, just a little bit, it's not a problem.
All right, county matters. These items include non-routy or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item to be approved out of order. Any requests? All right. 3.1, approve a budget adjustment for FY 1718 in the Treasury Tax Collector Department, increasing services and supplies by $967 and decreasing other charges by 120. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 1718 in the General Fund Department, increasing revenues by $189. Approve a budget adjustment for 1718 in the General Fund Contingency Department, increasing appropriations for contingency by $658. Increase in general fund appropriations of $847.
Good morning again, Chair. Members of the board, Angie Bickle, Arbiter Controller. This budget adjustment is under my department based on the fact that the department did not meet my deadline in getting budget appropriations timely so that we could pay all their 1718 invoices in the correct year. So technically, what's transpired here is the treasurer received some late notifications, bills from the Trinity Journal, and also from DMV that were related to fiscal year 1718. She had previously come to you for contingency for her first time, which she was very embarrassed about. Now I'm here to wipe out the remaining $658 in contingency from fiscal year 1718 and establish budget appropriations so that I can pay her bills in the appropriate year, so we don't receive a finding from our internal auditors.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
All right, I'll open up to the public. Any public members have questions? All right, we'll bring it back to the board. You're taking a motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving 3.1 is written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same as I.
Yeah. And you make sure Mike knows that we said congratulations to the board.
I definitely will.
Okay, quick to the board. Authorize a vehicle allowance for the Director of Transportation, potential net savings of $10,000 annually to the road fund.
Yes, on April 18th of 2017, this was brought to the board. And the board gave direction to staff to prepare an allowance proposal and then bring it back to the board. So here we are, a little bit later, and I bring it back to the board with the solution in order to be used to offer the Director of Transportation, Director Tippett, a vehicle allowance in lieu of driving the vehicle he has right now. The vehicle he has right now is, I think it's 20 years old, it's pushing 250,000 miles. It's going to be taken out of the fleet regardless of whether we do this or not, and the vehicle is no longer usable. So what we're doing in lieu of purchasing a new vehicle for him is giving him a vehicle allowance, which would have him use his own vehicle as he travels back and forth to Sacramento. Right now, he's putting approximately 2,300 miles a month on the vehicle. We're giving him a thousand mile allowance, which means he would cover his own maintenance, fuel, everything, as opposed to the county covering those on the county vehicle. So it shows it is a possible up to $10,000 net savings. And that's just in the monthly savings, that's not the actual purchase of the vehicle. To purchase a vehicle would be in excess of that, too. So we're asking the board's approval to give Director Tippett a thousand mile a month stipend in which he'll purchase a vehicle and use his own vehicle for county use.
Okay, questions?
Can you confirm the amount, the thousand miles, that you're asking here?
Yeah, it's an IRS rate, I think it's 54.5 cents a mile.
So I've seen 715 bucks a month. Is that for the first thousand miles?
That's on the current vehicle. That's what he's being charged right now on the current vehicle he's using.
John?
So after the thousand miles, we'll be paying the mileage?
No.
No, okay. And is there an attachment to change the ordinance, or will that be changed? If the Director of Transportation is taken out of being a lot of vehicle, the change, so he's getting paid for DM, the vehicle?
I think we can do it by resolution.
Right, exactly.
We have to do a change in the ordinance. Because in the ordinance, both the Director of Transportation and the Director of Services are allowed in the vehicle. I don't take advantage of that.
Right.
But he spends much more time on the road than I do, so it would be by resolution, I believe.
Just saying that might need to be done.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, so we're up to the public.
Angie Bickle, Arbiter Controller. I find it interesting that the discussion area talks about the monthly travel vehicle allowance. I'm totally fine with a vehicle allowance, it's allowable by law. However, under departmental recommendation, you'll notice it says, "Establish a vehicle allowance for the Director of Transportation and provide for the first 18 months of allowance as an advance to purchase a vehicle." Technically, an advance is a loan, and it is not legal. I will be personally held liable if I issue this $545 request per month for 18 months in advance. It's illegal.
Yes, councils.
If it's going to be given in advance in a lump sum for purchase, that could be considered a gift of public funds. Any kind of agreement that you enter into, more like a loan, you'd have to make sure it reads more like a loan, just giving it a lump sum and making a payback. In other words, left the department or the county early, you'd have to have provisions for that payback in the absence of him working for the county. There would need to be protections for purposes of securing that in the event he will leave the county, such as being a main holder on the title of the car, something along those lines. And you would have to be crafted very carefully to avoid running into a gift of public funds.
And if I could add to that? I understand the fact that Rick Tippett currently is under county code, allowed a county vehicle for commuting purposes for business and to and from home. I don't see why we have to make things so convoluted by not going through the motor pool for Mr. Tippett to purchase a vehicle through the motor pool, which means he would have to transfer money to the motor pool fund for the initial purchase, and then pay the monthly amount to not make the public feel like their money is being spent inappropriately. Because that's how I looked at this when I seen it. It was not in the discussion area. It was hidden down in the department recommendation, which a lot of people don't read. That was the way I interpreted it. Thank you.
Kate Graves from Lewiston. Angie already got my one question on what advance means. And my other question is, if you're doing an allowance so he can use his own vehicle, and it's going to be for county purposes, under what circumstances would he be driving county vehicles? So he's driving his personal vehicle, and it's for certain reasons that he's being reimbursed for it, but is this saying he's not going to be driving county vehicles? Because you're giving him an allowance to make up for not using a county vehicle. And that's not even vaguely mentioned in there. So I was just wondering, because that's another problem, because this is perception. I mean, there were problems with people seeing Rick Tippett shopping in Redding with a county vehicle. And I don't know why the transportation director goes to Costco, maybe there's business reasons, but people don't like that. And it's inappropriate. reasons, but people don't like that. And it's inappropriate. So I get that he needs a vehicle, like Angie said, to go back and forth to work and for work purposes. Um, and you guys just need to make that more clear because in, in the contract you have now, it's not.
Okay, there's a question for Angie?
Angie, this was an item that, um, CAO points pointed out, I think it was before this in H usual twenty seventeen, and there was a plan that was in this plan. I'm trying to remember. Was there ever an allowance of some sort previously for a vehicle purchase around that same time? Does that bring any bells?
Yes, so does it ring a bell? Well, there was an item, an agenda item that was on the board's agenda. I don't remember if it was pulled prior to, because I talked to Margaret and told her that this was a violation. It's against the law to give in advance, which is a loan of, of gift to public funds. So I believe it was pulled because of that reason. So yeah, there was something previously and I was surprised to actually see it come back.
So I'm just trying to remember, did anything of this nature happen already?
No.
On the allowance part?
No, he's been using a county vehicle for commuting purposes, for business and for to and from home. Um, he's been submitting mileage logs because his vehicle he drives does not meet IRS regulations. So he gets charged a dollar fifty each way to and from home on those days that he uses it.
Okay, that was, I was just trying to go back to April seventeen, so.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other public comment? With that, we'll bring it back to the board. Yes, John?
Make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to table this and send it back to staff until I can feel a little bit more comfortable with it.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any, want a clearer direction? Obviously, we have to make this contract legal.
Yes, very uncomfortable at this point. And, again, I'd like to see a resolution or ordinance that pulls, uh, that changes the current, what's currently on the code and code. So we're complying with it.
Okay. Bobby?
John, would you amend that to include, um, I don't know, when you say staff, is that, um, CAO and Angie and, can we put Angie in that mix? Do you need staff handle on it?
It's up to CAO to take care of his business.
If I do the other, I'd be, I'd be working on it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? With that, all in favor, signify by Saint I?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? I just wanted, CAO, you figure on direction on that?
Yes, we'll, we'll review the ordinances, uh, without a resolution and work with the Auditor Controller. It may be at this point, we may not come back to the board. So, you know, if, if, um, Auditor Controller believes that this is something that shouldn't be allowed and, and have done that, we may not come back to the board, but if it comes back to the board, we'll bring it back with, with the, uh, the issues with the advance. And we, uh, review ordinance and a resolution.
And some details in the plan?
I'll get your cost of, if we had to replace a vehicle, what those costs would be too.
All right, three point three, discuss and/or take action to appoint Angela Adrian to the Leaverville Architectural Review Committee as a business member within the Leaverville Historic District for a four-year term, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. No fiscal impact. You put this on?
It came through the clerk of the board, but I thought it was going to be on consent. But, um, this is a appointment for the Leaverville Architectural Review. It's, uh, Tina Corlzy. It's been out there for a little bit. So, um, it is a normal appointment process for Angela Adrian to be part of the review committee.
And, um, since this is in your district, how do you feel about this supervisor?
Great.
Funny about a bite, huh? Fantastic. Thank you.
And does this fully staff the ARC?
I think we have one more, um, position to be filled and we will be bringing back some renewals as well of existing members.
Any other questions? All right, open up to the public.
Since I've been going to these, uh, meetings with these people, um, I think Angela would be an excellent person for this and, and I'm more than happy to fill my name in the hat too, since I've done a lot of this stuff myself. If you're needing somebody else.
John, there was, um, I don't know which position's open. You'll have to check with Tina afterward and, um, we'll see what position that you might fit. You know, they have categories. So I, I just don't know.
All right, any other public comment? With that, we'll bring it back to the board.
Some of them.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by Saint I?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? All right, three point four, discuss and/or take action to reappoint Marcia?
Moravia.
Moravia, thank you. And Diana Yates to the Trinity County Waterworks District One Board Director, serve a four-year term, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. You brought this one forward?
It's a contact is Richard, but this is, uh, just a, a normal appointment that moves along with, uh, Waterworks Number One, four districts, three and five. Both have served on the, uh, Waterworks Board. And they're brave enough, brave enough to do it again? So, and we need to raise rates. I didn't say that.
Bobby, do you have any?
Marcia's also been very involved in the community and Diana Yates is, um, Paul Fisher's wife.
No, smart, uh, comment. Would the public like to, uh, chime in on this? Okay, that's a no. Bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by Saint I?
Aye.
Those same sign? All right.
Congratulations.
To us for getting somebody?
They're very dedicated.
All right. No other, oh, wait a minute, did we have a dinner? I tend to, I knew there was something I was supposed to be doing. All right, we have addendum A and B today. Addendum A, adopt a resolution, uh, which authorize submission of an application to receive funding for the Trinity County Victim Witnesses Assistance Program to the California Office of Emergency Service and authorize the District Attorney's Office. Business managers sign a grant award agreement, including any extensions or amendments thereof. No impact to the general fund. All grant expenditures will be reimbursed by the CalOES. Yeah, come on up.
Good morning. Morning to the Chairman, and to the Board. My name is Dennis Kessinger and I'm the Victim Coordinator with the Trinity County District Attorney's Office and running the Victim Witness Program. I appreciate having me come today. This has been a frenetic time lately because we've had change in staffing in the District Attorney's Office and the state has offered to us another hundred thousand dollars for a mass victimization advocate. And this comes out of the, not just the Sandy Hook issue here, or a few years ago, but also of the Las Vegas shooting that was a year ago yesterday. The state kind of surprised all the fifty-eight counties with this new extra hundred thousand dollars, which is wonderful, but it does require additional time to craft the proper language for it. It would be an additional, additional position for the county of Trinity. Uh, the intent of this position is to provide regional and coordinated training event that Trinity County suffers a mass victimization event. Two recent examples in our area, there's that DeHannah County shooting, a lot of the school was involved, a traumatic event involved advocates from other counties coming in to assist there. Also with the Weed file we had a few years ago where someone arsoned , let me read, took out a large part of the community. So there's a lot of need in the, uh, victimization and the victim witness world for this type of position. So I'd like to beg for its indulgence and allow me to come back in two weeks for the final papers for approval instead of the...
So I got a little lost in the end there. So you're asking for this to be tabled for two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Did you have a motion on that?
Well, we have to have the public. But yeah. So anybody in the public have comments? Okay, bring it back to the board.
Subвод to table?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you in two weeks. Okay, item B. Authorize the Chairman to sign an eighteen nineteen victim witness assistant program grant, VOCA Certificate of Assurance of Compliance Form.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, yes, this is pro forma, we've done this seven years since we've had the grant and also probation department had the grant. It's merely a, an approval process for the compliance. Normally it's signed or approved by the county council as well. And I'll bring that back in two weeks, please.
Okay. Any, um, more discussion up here? From the public? All right, bring it back. I don't entertain the motion.
So move to table?
For two weeks?
Yeah, next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All those, you know, signify by Saint I?
Aye.
All right. See you in two weeks. All right, with that, we'll move into closed session. Item four point one, continued from, uh, September eighteenth, uh, twenty eighteen, deliberation regarding the grievance of employee Scott McAllister pursuant to Trinity County Code Section two point six, zero point seven, two, zero, C, six. And item four point two, Government Code Section five four nine, five four point five, pending litigation, number cases one, Root versus Trinity County, uh, agency claim against Trinity County, uh, Trinity County Superior Court Case one one C, D, zero eight O, Trinity County Supreme Court, appeal number, um, C, zero seven, six, eight, two, eight, third district, federal case number, U S D C E D C A, uh, case number two, uh, one, three, C, D, zero, zero, four, five, two, T, L, L, N, C, M, K. Item four point three, Government Code Section five four, five, uh, five four nine, five four point five, Labor Negotiations, County Designated Representative David Prentice and Shelley Tong, um, Employee Organizations and Deputy Sheriff Associations. Any comment on closed session?
I have a comment on four point one. Um, as a manager of businesses and dealing with the labor commission, my understanding is that this Scott goes to the county yard and have work and drives his vehicle from Gable to Leaverville. If that's true, then he's a captive employee and he should be paid for the hour that it takes him to drive into work, not just for mileage. So I mean, there's some stuff, I mean, if he was driving from home to work, it'd be different, but if he's driving from a county yard to a county yard, he's a captive employee and he needs to get paid his wages. So that's something he did do.
Okay, good. Anybody else? All right, with that, we'll take a seven and a half minute break and go to closed?
I agree.